Good evening, we call the order of the Riker City Council meeting for August first, two thousand and twenty-three. Join me in the pledge allegiance. Good evening, everybody. If we could silence your cell phones for courtesy. And then for the audience and fellow council members, we are going to remove item. That's four, or I'm sorry, five. A, a because we did receive the resignation letter from the planning. Person, so individual, so we will remove that item as we did receive her resignation and then Mr. Ledbetter wants to. Explain the process what we'll do from here and then we'll go on.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is Jason Ledbetter, the city manager. So since we did receive the resignation. Removing the item tonight is valid. And now based off the resignation, the city staff will work on posting the job again, and we'll go through the exact same process. There may be some timeframes where mandated to keep the job posted for will validate. That with the Brown Act and with our attorney and then we will. Collect candidate information and then once we close the position, we will bring that information back to city council for you guys to make a determination on the appointment of a new planning commissioner.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Better and. We wish our planning commissioner that did serve her time. We wish her well and life sometimes happens. This is a big commitment and. Sometimes we're just have to choose our. Whatever family or whatever is going on at that time. First over everything else. And so she. Wish our city the best and loves her city and she thanked us for the opportunity. So. We will wait for our candidates to. Turn in their application and go through the process selecting a. Another person here soon. Yes, Mr. Davis. It was Marley Billingsley who was up for discussion tonight. Yep. All right. So item number two, this special presentations and or announcement this time slot is for informational presentations, appointments and or awards. To be presented by the city council or to the city council. This is tonight. There is our presentation by finance director Emily Aldwood, Aldridge, sorry. Includes a distribution of the city's biannual budget binder. Good evening, Ms. Aldridge.
Good evening, council. In front of you is your draft budget binder. I've included some pens and highlighters so that you can make questions and highlight things. There's a hundred grand for each of you. You're welcome. Pulled it out, you know, on my die. I won't hear him at Halloween, though. It's so weird.
It's close enough.
So we're just going to walk through some of the budget highlights. It's only about twelve, thirteen slides. And I can take some questions at the end. And I do have a finance committee on the schedule for Thursday to go a little deeper with our finance committee.
Right.
In addition to having a meeting already with Mr. Davis for tomorrow.
All right.
But I encourage you guys over the next two weeks, come see me, come see Jason, come see Rhonda, so we can really make sure everybody's on board with our plan.
All right.
So just so you guys know, late last week, we were notified that we received three grants. Uh, the Cal OES jumpstart for approximately two million. Thank you. Um, we don't book grants until we have paperwork in hand and have signed on the dotted line. So not included in this budget, but will be amended for these grants as we've been notified that we are going to be recipients. The Cal OES jumpstart cycle two at approximately a million dollars. The California wildfire hazard mitigation grant at approximately a million. And the cannabis control local jurisdiction retail access grant approximately one hundred and fifteen thousand. This budget is set up to achieve the four major goals of the city. We want to focus on fire, housing, water security. And my personal best favorite is fiscal resiliency. We're making those plans and putting the wheels in motion to make sure that we are sustainable in our projects that we're doing. A slightly different approach than what we've done in the past for budget strategy. In the past, we've always charged back our vehicle maintenance and municipal services for our vehicle maintenance, etc. We charge it back based off of the V E U's of each vehicle that belongs in that department. So I E. A fire truck costs more than the sedan here for. Uh, we decided to charge back both our IT expenses and our HR based off of. Uh, units of computer software, things that we're needing and the full-time F T Es for HR. It spreads the cost based off of actual usage. Your budget book that you have in front of you. Uh, it's in like seven different sections. Uh, for you guys, I would highly encourage that you focus most of your time on your budget overview and your departmental narratives. That's where we really tell the story of what this budget supports, what projects are they doing, what have the goals have they already achieved and what goals do they have for the future? Uh, their organizational structure lets you know how everything's set up, how we're structured. Uh, salary and positions is our current salary schedules, changes in F T Es and then most all our personnel costs. Um, as you guys are well aware, personnel is one of the most expensive parts of running a city. But also the most crucial in that if you have the right staff, you can get the right projects accomplished efficiently. Uh, then we protected fund balances. And which gives us an idea of where where we're hoping to end if everything went perfect for the budget. Everything will not go perfect for the budget. That's just life. Uh, but we will keep it in the overall. Revenue and expense detail lines are really more for our department heads so they can delve into line by line. Where do I, where do I have my money allocated? Budget highlight. The greatest news is general fund is to the good in both years. It's not greatly to the good, but it's to the good, which is positive. Problem.
Donna Batchikalupi.
Join the meeting.
Uh, we are using our ERPA funding to help maintain that balance. City, uh, in response to that problem, because we know that funding is going away. Is we have city staff continuing to develop revenue strategies to help offset that. Her included in the budget is per the resolution passed by council. Uh, one-time funding from sale of lands about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars has been set aside for design. Uh, and engineering of the ringing part pool. So that is included. Uh, it's also this budget also includes our ADA access and remodel at city hall at approximately two million. South Oregon Street project will be getting on the ground here this summer. Uh, that is also included. We have our D T S D grant cleanup for the foothill property. That we secured last fall. So that is also included. Some of our more general things that are included that you might find are skewing percentages, general plan updates. Uh, those are included in our planning budget. So if you look historically versus what we're doing right now, I probably will look high because we have to do it. Um, as always, we are looking for grants that will suffice parts of that general plan update so that it's not all general fund dollars. Uh, annual fee updates for continued appropriate revenue generation are included. Engineering for bringing Greenhorn Reservoir back online as an emergency water supply is included. Uh, pension funding to assist with our unfunded liabilities included in here. Uh, professional services for sales tax initiative for revenue generation for our fire services, which is one of our major city goals. Uh, community theater reroof and HVAC replacement. Uh, rate study for water and wastewater and the Burgess Street sewer upgrades, which are ongoing right now. Personnel changes. We are adding a full-time city clerk. Uh, so that we have that position appropriate, have that position to support our council and admin staff appropriately. Uh, we also have the addition of a operator in training for wastewater and water operator. Both of those are necessary to get us to compliance of a level four plants. Uh, which we are teetering on having to suffice that for the state. So we want to plan ahead and get them in. And trained because there is a lengthy training process involved with getting them up to speed. General fund capital outlay. Uh, for both years, building maintenance, twenty-five grand for both in both years. Help fund that that city hall remodel where we may fall short. And police is a vehicle in both years and including munitions. Special grants, capital planning. This is where our planning fund stuff comes in. Uh, for fire, we have funding for the additional planning and engineering to get that ready. And ready to go when we have that additional funding, the, like I said, the Oregon street is included in here. Uh, the design funds for the swimming pool are in here. And the D T S D cleanup. And addition and finishing up some of our economic development grants for Carnegie Hall and the job cluster analysis. Uh, what I failed to include on this, I do apologize, is the additional funding for fire. Uh, that is set aside for more of the planning from the fireside. E I waivers. This is our C D B G money that we have designated to for this city hall remodel isn't is under here. Water capital projects. We have, as you can see, the major highway three project was is in here from last year that is closed out. So it looks a little less because it's not a six, seven million dollar project that we're doing, uh, but we do have included. Um, some. Well, and security of water rights, etc. And. Our wastewater capital projects. We have some. Linking at the moment. Uh, part of the. South Oregon is included in there, Burgess Street project. Except on those ones. And my favorite slide is the state in which we are to the. State of California and federal, we are low risk across the board. Uh, we have some areas where we need to address future pension costs, which we are well aware of, but we are. Nowhere worse than anyone else. We are definitely have a plan in place and slowly chip away at that and are constantly looking for different ways and ideas to address that. Uh, but we're healthy in general fund reserves pension, pension funding. So we're funding at the rate we should be and even more. So we're healthy there. Uh, retiree health. Cash and investments. We are all very to the good. I want to thank my department heads for all of their help on this and figuring out all these projects and working through them all. And getting together what I feel is a very solid budget. I'm looking forward to talking with Drake tomorrow and sorry, Mr. Davis and the finance committee on Thursday. And you know, even after that, welcome to come back and see me. I'm here all next week as well. I'm happy to go through any of the budget that you just need further clarification or have questions.
All right. Thank you, Emily. I'm sure I'll be, I'll make an appointment with you after I go through this and read and then I'll meet with you after I review it. So I'll be calling you. Yeah, me too.
In all right. Mr. Mayor, just wanted to chime in just with just for the process. I know we've talked about it behind the scenes, but for those in the audiences that ultimately. We do the finance committee meeting, but then the budget is coming back to this council on the fifteenth for a vote. And so. Uh, just if in case the audience was confused.
Correct. All right. So everybody hear that we'll be coming back on the fifteenth. For the vote for the budget. All right. The public comments. This is time for public participation is welcomed and invited all city council meetings. This time is set aside. For residents to address the city council on matters listed on the consent agenda as well as other items not included on the regular agenda. If your comments concern an item noted on the regular agenda, please address the city council when that item is open for public comment. The city requests that persons addressing the city council refrain from making personal slanderous, profane or disruptive remarks. Council members unrecognized by the mayor may ask clarifying questions of the presenter, but no action may be taken by the city council during. The public comment section of the meeting under the Brown Act, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking action. On any item not listed or posted on the agenda. This time is set aside for residents to address the city on matters listed on the consent agenda as well as other items not included on the agenda. If your comments concern an item listed under the public hearing or new business sections of the agenda, please address the city council when that item is open for public comment. Please speak into the microphone from the podium. The podium electronically adjusts up and down to accommodate the speaker. Please state your name for the record prior to providing your comments. Please address the city council as a whole. If you have documents, documents to present, please provide a minimum seven copies. These become pu- a public record. Please limit your remarks to five minutes. Since the council is unable to take action on any issues on the agenda, your matter may be referred to staff for follow-up or be placed on a future agenda. Public comment period is not intended to be a question and answer period or conversations with the council or city staff. Do you have any public comments at this time?
Good evening. This is your bi-monthly report on our.
Please say.
Greenhorn. Greenhorn Park's never looked better. Did a great job. They're doing a very good job. All trails are open. Biomass reduction. Is making great progress. I'll be interested in seeing how they get all those logs out of there, but that'll be fun. Uh, pretty dry up on there for trails now. Slacks in this shop still needs to be repaired. And of course, the roof on the mill, uh, we're talking about getting a couple of old guys up there with some hammers and maybe taking care of that. Greenway. Uh, visitor museum, uh, good headway being made on the Welcome Center area. Got it pretty well cleaned up. All I got to do is make that final push. But, uh, they are back in there in swarms now. Uh, drug use and camp behind the block wall at the Welcome Center seating area. Uh, two shopping carts associated trash. But Wyka Creek is also beginning to, uh. Uh, reduce, reduce its flow. Uh, less significantly. Hopefully the drives them suspicious have headed down the Shasta River. I have not seen a lot of fry and. Uh, and they're correct in the last two or three weeks. Uh, Greenway Mount Chasta Title to Orland. Uh, there are six active cats in there. You gotta look hard, but you can find them. Two of them have active fire pits. Pretty dry down there. Trash included in an air conditioner. Uh, it's not the Mount Chast dial entrance. I don't know where they're plugging it in, but yes, I don't think it's even working. Uh, one concern, active drinking and drug use was observed by myself on my Sunday trail survey. In that area between Mount Chasta, uh, title and Orland Road. I did make a report on one individual. He needed to get, uh, taken for six forty-seven F and at least taken so I could, uh. Sober up you drunk. Uh, now I'm going to ask you about pickleball courts. And Wyrica, we need some pickleball courts. They're fastest growing sport in America. Lots of different places we could utilize. Minus three park has two unused courts. Uh, you know, I was even thinking there might be a way to have an agreement with Wyrica High School. To utilize their old tennis court areas is not being used at all. Uh, it it would sure be a cheap way of putting that together if there was no way to put it up in modern park. Uh, Ringy Park has a spot at M. Surfer Cross, Discovery, the same old place. Heck, you might even be able to use a parking lot behind the old Carnegie Library. If you wanted to, I don't know. Anyway, we do start thinking about, we do need some outdoor pickleball court because it's. We even have, I don't even know or not, but we have a shop that sells pickleball items in Wyrica. So thank you very much and good job again as always.
Thank you. Any other public comment, Donary?
As Amriachi, um, I would really like for the police department to. And. Put out, you know, there at the end of the month, how many arrests were made, how active they were. Like weed does, weed in Mount Chasta, and it really gives the citizens an idea of what is happening with our police department. They are really doing their job. They are really doing a great job. Because when I read that this morning, I was like, see that, you know, that is awesome. It doesn't have to mention names. You know, it can see so many drunk drivers or whatever, you know, it it whatever they were arrested for. It's perfect. It lets people know that the police department is active and working and the same with the fire department. You know, people could actually see, see, you know, where. If they have to go on medical calls, do we really need them to go on that many medical calls? You know, I thought we reduced. That kind of thing. That would be a good thing for us. Thank you.
Thank you. The other.
Hello?
Hello? That was somebody.
Hello?
Hold on.
Yes.
That was somebody on. Rhonda that wants to talk. Okay, uh, whoever's online, can you please state your name and go ahead?
Yes, this is Donna Batchikalupi. And I'm calling on behalf of the Shasta Valley Cemetery District.
Hi, Donna.
Shall I go ahead?
Go ahead.
I had meant to speak at your special meeting. Um, on, um, July eighteenth, I was, um, I think it was. And, um, you kind of closed the meeting abruptly and right after the attorney spoke. And I wanted to bring up the fact that the cemeteries are being overrun by drug use. Um, many of our people that have people buried in those cemeteries are now afraid to visit their family plots. Um, it, things may be being cleaned up other places, but I think that's because people are moving into the cemeteries to do their drug deals. And to toss their needles and, um. So far, there hasn't been a lot of damage. There's been some graffiti on a couple of stones and we've had break-ins in the office. But the meetings that go on and the drug exchanges are really causing. Our residents not to be able to visit their family plots. And I don't know what the city can do about it, but I think they need to be aware that these things are happening. We've discussed closing the gates to the cemetery, but we don't really think that will help. A great deal because there's lots and lots of walkers that are, uh, coming in and hiding behind the stones and. And, um, so I think this is something the city council needs to be aware of, and maybe there's a way that that. City council can help out, but, um, it's becoming a real problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna.
Thank you.
Any other public comment or anybody else online, Rhonda? All right. I will close a public comment and we will. You know, the consent agenda, item number four. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and non-controversial and will be enacted by one motion unless. Any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion. A approval ratification of payments issued from July tenth, two thousand and twenty-three through July twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. Approval of minutes of the regular agenda held July eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-two approving the destruction of a certain city records identified by the finance director. And then these blink, so I guess there's no. Uh, and the record of sending capital action before you is the motion to adopt the consent agenda of the Barca City, City Council of the City of Irica as presented. What are the wishes of the council? Councilman Davis? Do you have a question? Okay, so you have a question, Mr. Davis?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah.
In microfilm or something such as that.
Emily, want to come answer, Mr.? Councilman Davis's question?
These are guidelines based from the state on record destruction. Uh, some of them are PDFed and online in our server, uh, but not all of them. Uh, we are not obligated to keep records after a certain amount of time based off the state guidelines. For example, it would be destroying, uh. Payment checks from you pay your water bill ten years ago and we keep a copy of it. There's an electronic copy that went to the bank. And now we're going to destroy that record.
All right. Okay, so if other questions, what are the wishes of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I have a motion from Councilman Cake. I will make the second. I'll go for a roll call. Councilman Cake?
Aye.
Councilman Davis?
Aye.
Council Baker?
Yes.
Councilman Protim McCoy?
Aye.
And I vote, I, motion passes five to zero. And remember, we removed item five. So we go right along to this is the city manager staff reports. Wow, city manager and staff may make brief doubtsments or reports at this time, Mr. Ledbetter. We have the staff reports.
Yeah, I'm going to give one. I think we have a couple more after me as well.
Okay, great.
Now, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Wyrica City Council. This is Jason Ledbetter, the city manager for the city of Wyrica. As you heard earlier in the budget presentation, uh, from the finance director, we did receive word in the middle of last week that we received the jumpstart O E S grant that we came to you in October. It's great to apply for. That's one million dollars of funding over five years. The position will be paid at a clip of about ninety-five thousand dollars a year. Their responsibility will be to manage all hazard mitigation grants and attempt to go get more grant funding. And then manage those grants and roll out those, um, opportunities within the community. A lot of them that we talk about are fire resiliency. We've worked with the Fire Safe Council, uh, with Jay Perkins, who's mapped out the city. And so there is an aggressive, uh, plan in place. We just need to seek the funding for a lot of mastication projects on. We just need to seek the funding for a lot of mastication projects on public and private property. The city then the following day, I believe, uh, received word from Cal Fire that we were approved for another million dollar grant, which is primarily based around our purchase of an air curtain burner. Uh, this is very exciting and this will be one of the first things this new resiliency officer manages after we post and hire that position. The city is continuing to work with our consultant on polling and ballot measure language for a proposed sales tax initiative to fund the construction of a new fire hall as well as add some paid staff to the Wairega Fire Department. Uh, staff in that vein then is recommending a special meeting before the eight fifteen regularly scheduled Wairega City Council meeting to what we'll call reflect on the one-year anniversary of the McKinney Fire. And then dig a little bit deeper and showcase the items that we currently were successful, uh, getting those two grants and then talk a little bit more about our plan with the Wairega Fire Department and Fire Hall. And then gain feedback from the community on maybe some of their concerns for hazards primarily based around fire. And so we would attempt to be doing that anywhere between either five or five thirty and then roll into regular session at six thirty. So they would be two separate noticed, uh, meetings. Pardon me. Uh, the city has made an offer of employment for two of our open positions, so we will have a new staff accountant. And we will be adding a planning manager here in the coming, uh, weeks. Uh, I did visit Shasta Lake City on Thursday, seven twenty. I met with the city manager there. We focused our discussion around commercial redevelopment. They've been very successful in Shasta Lake City doing that. And then also on the GIS tools implemented on their, um, for public use on the Shasta Lake City website and then brought that back into our communications meeting. We dug a little bit deeper. We are capable of something similar. And so in the comms meeting, we're talking about, uh, implementing or a long-range strategy to implement GIS for the public, uh, where we can show them a multitude of things around the city flood plains. When work was done on certain buildings, when work was done on certain roads, uh, where the parks are located, just a really cool interactive tool for the community. Uh, I attended a solid waste JPA meeting where we discussed our interest in getting a planning document for how the county plans on complying with SB one three eight three composting laws uh, that go into effect here in the coming years. Assistant City Manager Reda Hogan and I met with Great Northern to discuss the CDBG grant opportunities for the local food bank and devise a strategy to gain funding for the food bank. Uh, Assistant City Manager Hogan is prepping, uh, the next application. She's been crushing it on grants, quite frankly, and she is going after now just kind of prepping for a community resilience center grant, a CRC grant, as we refer to it. Uh, where we will be attempting to make improvements to the theater and community center, uh, to act as a center where the community would congregate during emergencies. This is a very competitive grant and we're just educating ourselves currently trying to determine how we can appropriately spend this fu- funding and be compliant. It is also a not necessarily an easy grant to get. But just going through this process, if we don't receive this grant funding, when we come to you to ask if we can apply for the grant, having a plan in place, there's multiple different streams of money coming available that we think it's a good idea to get a plan in place and then seek funding for these ideas. Uh, the theater roofing bid closed today. The city also has a bid notice out for soil cleanup at Foothill and an RFP for engineer and design at Ringy Pool. Those are, uh, on the website. On Thursday, seven twenty-seven, I attended the communications ad hoc committee meeting where we looked at the Shasta Lake City website and GIS interface. Other examples of municipal websites hosted by our website provider Civic Plus and started to create action items in a scope of work for our ideal improvements for city communication with the public. Uh, the city is also assessing the feasibility of a new construction home key project and a joint application with the county and the Karuk. Uh, we will have more on this soon if we are successful with this partnership. Uh, if we are not, we will continue to proceed with, uh, planning for the next HCD round of funding where we would come back on either one of these projects would come back to the city council. Uh, I will be on vacation next week, starting August sixth and returning back to the office, uh, August fourteenth. Um, the Bluebird Code Enforcement properties are getting cleaned up as we speak. Uh, so that's been going on for a few days now. In case, uh, you catch wind of that, things are looking good. Uh, and then just to comment on one item that came up, Ben Miller does have a pickleball plan. And it would be at the, or at the park at the corner of Oregon and Nap. And I believe, uh, I will gain more information and bring that back to council, but I believe it was something that we thought we could implement rather quickly. So that's all I have, but I believe both of our chiefs are going to give staff reports.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Ledbetter. Chief Gilman. Yeah, how are you?
So I was asked to bring a report on the Sunridge system. Unfortunately, we don't have Sunridge yet, so we're still waiting. We're in the queue, which is good. We had to go through all the permits to the state. We had to go through permits with flats, all that. So next week is our kickoff meeting. So with any luck, it's coming soon. Unfortunately, I don't have anything to report on.
All right, that's it. All right. That was short and sweet. Chief Lima, how are you?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, um, I know there was a request some time ago for a report on the, uh, activities that occurred on the fourth of July. And through, uh, per YPD dispatch, uh, they had five citizen reports of illegal fireworks and eight officer-initiated reports. And those were investigated and all the, uh, contacts for the attempts for contacts were, uh, they were unable to locate, you know, where those were being, um, fired from. So um, that was basically it. It was, we had no fire calls at all. So that was a very compared to previous years, it was, it was relatively quiet. And it seemed as though once they stopped, it didn't continue on sporadically throughout the night. So we're pleased with that and we didn't have anybody doing, you know, as though there were some illegal ones going off. It wasn't to the extent that, uh, you know, it had been in prior years. So that's, that's what I have for you. Um, I don't have any other uh, pertinent information other than we got a couple of new recruits coming on in the next, uh, couple of months and that's very exciting. So yeah, I'm looking forward to all the different grants that are, they're out there for, in the, the assistance that the fire department will hopefully see come to fruition. So, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you have at, at this time.
Council members, do you have any questions for Chief Lima's?
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Mr. McCoy, thank you for the stuff from, uh, Arizona.
Okay, at this time, we'll go to council members. Councilman Davis, I'll go to you first tonight. Any reports? Comments, feel-good stories?
I did not attend the Fire Safe Council meeting last time. Uh, my wife and I were out of town. Matter of fact, we're on the coast having some seventy-degree weather. So that would be all that I have to report.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Baker?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Middleton. Um, I attended the Communications Ad Hoc Committee meeting, um, last week, week before, I'm not sure. All the days fly by every, and, uh, we definitely missed you, uh, Mayor Middleton. Um, and I think that actually is pretty much all I have to report on.
All right.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. You know, always got to come back with something.
Sure.
Um, I would like to, um, commend and thank, uh, the, uh, city administrator and especially the assistant city administrator. Great work on those grants. I think that's awesome. And I think that we need to be celebrating that in the press. Um, and, uh, I'm, I just want to say thank you. Great job.
Uh, thank you very much for that. And I mean, I do think that, and I've said it multiple times before, but there is something very special here that doesn't exist in other places I have worked, and that is the staff that works here. And obviously, um, our assistant city manager is incredible. And so she is driving a lot of these. And as you saw from our finance director, alleviating the clerking responsibilities, if you guys so choose to approve the budget, um, will allow her to be, um, even more unleashed on grant opportunities. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. All right. Thank you, Councilman Baker. Councilman K?
Not much to report on. I'm having quite a few, um, meetings with citizens, but, um, other than that, I just want to thank Jason and just the veterans and staff. And, uh, Wairega transfer, we're putting the dumpster up by the COS up there. It asks, it has made a huge difference. I don't know how many people drive by there. I drive by there every single day, two or three times a day. And the trash has been cut by a fraction. I mean, there's hardly any trash. Um, most of it's been thrown in the dumpster like we've been planned and it's been cleaning up. There's still more to work to be done up on the hill. But a lot of them are getting better at doing that. Now, since there's a dumpster there, they've been, it seems like they've been throwing away pretty regularly now. So that's made a big difference on, on the look of the, of the hill and the street for sure. And any other, uh, insects and critters that might be running around too, enjoying the trash that was laying along the street at the time too. So that helps a lot. Um, and other than that, um, like I said, uh, good success story is still going. Um, that one homeless individual still been working at my shop and he's been doing a great job and he's really anxious to see the Siski Crossroads go in. So he can apply for that and maybe have a place to go. He's really anxious. He's actually got, um, his, uh, birth certificate and working on IDs. Actually, that should have, should have that in the next day or two, his ID. And then after that, he's going to work on his, uh, driver's license. So
Nice.
Yeah. So it's really good to see some progression on that one. Um, and then last is, you know, we got, next week we got fair going on. So everybody go out and enjoy the fair. It's going to be a good year. I think, uh, no smoke. We didn't, weren't able to enjoy it last year. So I think it's going to be a good year for everybody going to the fair and looks, hopefully the weather will will stay mellow enough, not too hot that we can actually go and enjoy it. But, um, it's going to be a, a pleasure this year for me. I get to take a two, a little two-year-old to the fair, so he can enjoy it. So I'm looking, I'm looking forward to that. So that'll be it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilman K. Pro Tim McCoy?
Yes, I just have one thing to say, and I wanted to thank, uh, the chief YPD and thank his staff personally, if you would let him know. I appreciate, um, I dealt with the predicament and, um, your staff was very professional, uh, along with, uh, Officer Johnson. And, um, I appreciate their professionalism and please let them know that I do appreciate it. And you, you know what I am to, you know what to, I thank you.
Why everybody's quick tonight? Short, um, I don't think I have too much either. Um, sorry, I missed last Thursday's meeting. I was a little under the weather, um, for, um, ad hoc, but heard it was a, a good job and I did receive a copy of what you guys discussed and I'll review that. Um, thank you to Emily for all the hard work she has put into that. And, um, I got some reading, more reading to add to my pile and of stuff to do and, uh, just one thing I want to comment on is when, um, just kind of going back to what Mr. Ledbetter said about our staff and a lot going on when we, um, have citizens in our audience saying we haven't done anything or we're sitting here and they don't see any change in Wairega. You look at our budget and look at every, the projects that are going on in our town. That's evident that there is things going on and we are doing things and our staff is making a difference. And we are, as a council, are um, moving forward and supporting them on doing that. Um, it's so nice to see two properties that have been just total nightmares for us as a council, as for citizens, as for businesses. They have, are getting cleaned up. So, um, no, we are doing things in this town and as I'm so happy, um, just what is going on. And I cannot thank Mr. Ledbetter and the staff and the council enough for, you know, we take, we're, we take a beating sometimes, but then when you start seeing the end project and the process of some of these things that have been going on for about a year, year and a half, some six months or some, since I took my seat here. And so to see them finally starting to come to it and it's, we are doing uh, my good job for our citizens of Wairega and we just keep striving. So, um, for our town and that's what we all sit here for. So anyways, thank you guys. And with that, thank you guys for coming and we are out here early tonight for once in a long time. I'll join the meeting. Good night, everybody. Thank you. This is a, this is a record.